I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 10th, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, I would like to have us look at adding a discussion report item on the Northfield Public Schools Charter School Authorizer Renewal Process, and also on the Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative, or SEMSEC, update. And we also have a number of personnel items, including appointments, increases, decreases, and changes of assignment, resignations, and retirements.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes for the regular school board meeting held on July 13th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Jeff, excuse me, second, second, seconded by Ann. Is there any discussion, or questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, July 13th, 2015, say aye. Abandoned. Opposed? Motion carried. Those minutes are approved. Announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
We just have a cup tonight, first of all. Forty-eight of our incoming seventh graders completed the successful trip to Eagle Bluff on July 27th through 29th. The three-day experience promoted learning the dovetails with classroom academic and social needs. While at Eagle Bluff, the Northfield students won two awards. Eagle Bluff Environmental Learning Center Eagle High Award for Excellence in Conserving Our Natural Resources, and the Golden Clean Plate Award for Minimizing Food Waste to One Pound Ten Ounces While in Resins. My guess is lots of hungry young seventh graders. Community services thanks the following district staff and parent chaperones for assisting the trip. Northfield School District Staff included Tony Sidell, Rhea Merkins, and Kimbra Dimmick. Parent chaperones included Carrie Gilman, Mark Sneicher, and John Blandred. So again, very much appreciate that. This is working, has ended up working out very, very well. Provides a summer experience for parents who really want to have their children have that opportunity, and does it in a way that it doesn't really interrupt or require us to modify anything during their school year. Now it's my pleasure to introduce two new administrators, and I believe, Dr. Gilman, you are going to begin that process. We told them no more than 20, 25 minutes apiece. PowerPoint would be optional.
You're hilarious.
But we are really pleased to have new administrators in our midst, and so, Dr. Gilman, would you do the honors?
Yes, anytime we add to our school leadership family, we want our school board to be able to put a face with a name and start building that relationship, and so we're very pleased tonight to have Jim Calsath, who is our new Director of Buildings and Grounds, started on July 1, and Michael O'Keefe, who is our brand spanking new Assistant Principal at Northfield Middle School. Again, just getting started. In fact, his recommendation for hires on tonight's consent agenda, and so he was getting a little worried. So I've asked both Jim and Michael just to take a couple of minutes to introduce themselves to you, so you have a chance to begin to get to know a little bit about them. So Jim, why don't you go ahead and start us off, please?
Hi, I'm Jim Calsath. I grew up in the Eagan-Rosemont area. My wife and I still reside in Rosemont. Spent over thirty years at the Edina Public Schools, District 273. During that time, I started at the bottom, and I've pretty much done every conceivable task there is in the Buildings and Grounds area. So with the background that I have, coming to Northfield, I was extremely pleased to see that the community places a high value in their facilities, and I can, with my background, I can, I really appreciate that. And personally, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you, and this is a wonderful opportunity for myself personally, and I'm looking forward to working with each of you and this wonderful district. Thank you.
What we've been really impressed with Jim so far is that he's been out really building relationships with, you know, custodians and head custodians, and our maintenance and our grounds crew. You know, that's such an important piece and a great way for him to get to know the district at the level that he does, and so been really pleased with that to this point in terms of really getting out and getting to know people, and really on top of a lot of things right away. Fortunately, we don't have a ton of big projects this summer, but the ones that we have, Jim is very ably shepherded because Paul Bell had them, and then I tried to shepherd them for a couple of months, and everyone knows how, I could make the trains run on time, but you're not asking me to pull a boiler.
We needed their burger.
Exactly, so. Michael?
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm Michael O'Keefe. This is my sixteenth year in education. I've worked in Eagan and in Rosemont. Before this, I was also in Cannon Falls as the Assistant Principal. I'm extremely humbled and excited to begin my journey here in Northfield. I've heard nothing but great things about this community and the people who work here, and the families that we get to work with every day. Just a little side note, it was really fun to explain to my mom that I was interviewing and took a job in Northfield, and it actually caused her to tear up a little bit because my grandfather was born and raised here, and him and his twin brother, so for me to explain to mom that I was coming down to Northfield was very magical for her. So in the family, we just had our family reunion and got to tell a lot of people all about my new position, and they were just so excited to find out that our family was coming back to Northfield. So I'm excited to meet all of you and get to know all of you, and feel free to come visit me at the middle school in time. So, thanks.
And Michael has had his hands full right from the start because unfortunately Tina Wirkey, one of our longtime, well, she's been at the middle school as an administrative assistant for several years, she's moving on to a different position, so one of Michael's first thing is to hire his administrative assistant, and so right out of the gate, a really important, important piece. As you know, we don't joke when we say that we feel this is a destination district, and these two gentlemen really, they came through pools that were very competitive. We had lots of great candidates for these positions, and so we feel very lucky again to get quality hires because, you know, as you know, that's one of our most important things, is making sure that we provide a quality education, and that is provided by the people who we hire to help do that. So we feel very fortunate to have these two fine men joining our leadership team. So, thanks for the opportunity to introduce them to you.
Thank you, welcome.
And we told them they could go when they were done.
Oh, absolutely. No, people always just go, and we're not offended. I can't?
No, not at all. No.
Truly, people go.
We would have told you if it was. Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Enjoy your night.
See you soon.
Okay, so first item for discussion and reports is the Long Term Facility Maintenance Review and Ten Year Plan. Matt's here to present that, and there was a handout to aid in the discussion in our board packet.
We just have a very brief overview of this for you this evening. Actually, it's been something that all of you have heard about for quite some time, if you've ever listened to any of the C information that we bring to the board, which I know you all do. So the long-term facilities maintenance revenue really is what was adopted by the legislature to address, if you remember the C video with the two young kids who were the superintendents in their individual schools. It was the video that came after the Capital Pizza video. Our own Kevin Dahl was the chief author of this legislation in the Senate, and really essentially what the long-term facilities maintenance revenue program does is it basically takes a lot of the recommendations of the All Facilities Work Group and puts it into law. And so essentially, it takes what we used to have as deferred maintenance and health and safety revenue, and combines them into one pot, plus gives it additional money. I've got a few slides here that came directly from Tom Melcher from the state. They're very technical in nature, so I'm just going to summarize them as we go forward. And so the key thing is that it's a program that's going to be phased in over the next few years, and so you'll see in the first year, we're going to be getting, which will be for fiscal year '17, so not for this school year, but for next school year, we'll be getting $193 per adjusted pupil unit. When you actually do the math on that, when you look at what we used to get for health and safety and for deferred maintenance, that was around $510,000. We're projecting that we're going to get around $750,000 that first year of the three-year phase-in. So we're going to get about $250,000 more right away in FY '17, and it looks like we're going to get close to a million more by the end of the time that they phase in, based on the projections that MDE has shared with us at this time, and we all know Val Murdistorf who's made those projections, so we know they're conservative, and the chances of us getting a little more than that are probably very likely. One of the key things with this new ratio is the fact that they'll base some of it on your average age of your building, so just in case you were wondering, 33.96 is the average age of our building. So there's also some additional pieces that you can qualify for if you're doing indoor air quality, fire alarm or suppression, or asbestos abatement at $100,000 or more. We're not anticipating right now that that's something that we're going to take advantage of right away, but it's something that we certainly could down the line. As you remember, one of the reasons we went after this was it was not equitable, what the way the law had worked before. The 25 largest districts in the state had the ability to do levying for projects like tuck pointing and other kinds of things that we would have to use our regular operating capital for. And so the 25 largest school districts still have the same stuff that they had before. They weren't penalized for us coming in and getting some similar authority to what they had, so that's just really clear that we didn't take anything from those largest 25 districts, it just simply is giving the authority to the rest of the districts throughout the state. Another key thing is that it's equalized, and so with the equalization, the way that our projections look is that for every dollar that we would have in this kind of revenue, 66 cents of it would come from our taxpayers, and 33, 34 cents come from the state. So it's a mix of state aid and local levy. Before, it was all local levy, so there was no equalization in our previous health and safety or deferred maintenance. So this is a big, we wish it was indexed. If it was indexed, it'd be even better, but the fact is that having it equalized is a significant piece. Another key thing that we're really thrilled with is that they're showing some common sense here, in the fact that we can actually issue bonds for a program that we'd be looking to use. So let's say that we're looking to do a roof, we could issue the bonds and do it like we've always done it, or you can actually identify that project several years out and begin to levy ahead of time, so that when you do the project, you pay for it without having to have interest or those other kinds of pieces as part of the bond sale, and all those other kinds of things that you're aware of. So it actually, I think, really gives districts who are ahead of the game and really planning an advantage that we're not going to have to spend those precious dollars on interest or other pieces. So you can do it either way, and actually, it's equalized either way, which is really important. That was something people were concerned about. So one of the key things as well is that, in terms of, as you know, with any kind of bond or our capital projects levy that we have, ag land is taxed for that. And what they did is they took part of Representative Roskowski's proposal in which they're actually reducing the impact on ag land for this levy by 50%. So when the calculation is done, it doesn't hit ag land at the same rate that it would say that we went out for a bond referendum or something like that. So that's just an important piece for people to understand on this part. And we're guaranteed, in our case, we know we're going to get more money, but what they did do is they guaranteed no one would get less money than they did before, as they've done several times with programs like this. So what can we do with this? I liken it to, as I read through the rules, and Chris and I went, Jim and I read through them last week with Val, and Chris and I read through them again today, and essentially, really, anything that we could do with health and safety or deferred maintenance dollars before, we can do now. And it really is, I think, the key piece is to make sure that you are maintaining, can't replace, but you are preventing erosion of the facility or the grounds. And so, as you know, things like tuck pointing, things like roofs, we believe things like parking lots and some of those kinds of things are going to be things that qualify. So it's anything to make sure that the, you know, we're always after the exterior envelope to the building, to make sure that they are as sound as possible. We see a lot of these kinds of things taking place and happening as a result of this, where we may have had to put them off before due to just having to prioritize our operating capital. What you can't do is you can't finance the construction of new facilities. So for example, when we did the addition at Sibley a few years ago, we could not use the dollars from this to do something like that. You cannot add, you can't finance a lease purchase agreement, there's energy efficiency projects that are out of bounds, as are any kind of security upgrades. So any of the work that we had recently done on securing our front entrances, those do not qualify for this funding, nor do communication strategies, like we just did some upgrades of our radios within the district for our custodians, those do not qualify either. So really, and these things were all prohibited by the old law, so it's nothing new. I think the key thing is they're taking both of those old categories, health and safety and deferred maintenance, and providing us additional money and more flexibility, which when was the last time that we heard that, you know, actually, some more flexibility? So, bring this back up here if I can. So the key thing is that we now need to submit, we submit a ten-year plan. As you know, we've had a ten-year plan for more than 10 years. We've had a long time ten-year plan. So the key thing is that we now have to take that ten-year plan that was actually, is actually quite detailed. You saw that when we were actually going through the first stages of the facilities process last, last fall, last spring. We actually basically have to consolidate that, and the state is asking us to estimate by finance code how much we're going to be spending over the next several years, and they're estimates, so they can be changed, and we'll have to file this every year. What we're going to be doing is, we're nearly done with that transition from the old ten-year plan into the new state format. And basically, the rules came, the new rules came out in mid-July because this wasn't approved until the special session, so they are requiring that you get the plan in by August 14th, but then we can prove that we've had board approval of the plan up until September, the middle of September. So what we wanted to do tonight was to share with you that really, this is nothing new. You actually kind of knew about some of this before, as we've talked about through C and some of the other presentations we've done, but we wanted just to give you a quick preview of actually something that we lobbied for that actually got done. And a key thing I want to point out is that, again, thanks to Dr. Richardson's leadership, we were able to, one of the reasons we're at $250,000 more than previously is because initially, there was a part of the legislation that was going to count old indoor air quality projects as part of your previous money, and so we were only projecting about $60,000 in new money. Fridley and Northfield were in a similar circumstance. Our two districts came together and contacted Senator Dahl, explained to him this caveat, and as they finalized the legislation, they removed that part that would have penalized this actually, so that we actually did end up getting more money as a result of paying attention to the legislative process. So what will, you know, none of what's on the ten-year plan or the way that we're going to frame it is going to be a shock to you. It's the exact kind of thing that you've seen before, but we're going to need to have, we're going to ask you to approve it at the next board meeting, just so we can get that statement of assurance into the state. And remember, we're going to do this every year, so the fact is, our ten-year plan is a living document. We just need to get this in and get going in the first year of it. And Dr. Melcher has said that he knows that this is the first year for a lot of districts, and that there'll be some modifications as time goes along. So with that, I will offer, if there are any other questions that people have that we can try to answer at this time, we'd be happy to do so.
Board members, are there any questions? No? Oh, I'm sorry. Ellen?
So I don't know if you can answer this or not, this might be too fine of a detail, but I was puzzled by the, that they allowed for increasing accessibility of school facilities, but not for remodeling of existing facilities, and I wasn't sure how you could make something more accessible without some sort of remodeling.
I think the key thing would be if you're remodeling for the, the way I would understand is if you're modeling for the purpose of accessibility, they would look at that differently as if you were just remodeling it for, one of the key terms in what I've read so far, Ellen, is that at the end of the work, it needs to serve the same purpose as it did before the work. So they said if you started off with a science lab, you need to finish with a science lab. If we started off with a science lab that we maybe did some kind of accessibility piece to it, and at the end it's still a science lab, I believe that that's going to be okay. We are going to learn quite a bit as we started with this piece, but I think that's the difference, is that if the remodeling is specifically the purpose of making it more accessible, and the space maintains its original intent, that's where I believe we're going to be okay.
And then I just had, with accessibility, is that just only ADA, or are they thinking about it more broadly, like if we had to start thinking about transgender locker room sort of situation?
I do not know the answer to that. We will find out, though. My sense is initially, it's the same accessibility piece that would have been in the previous requirements. We know that the piece that you're just talking about is rapidly changing, so I would not be surprised to see some kind of modification based on that at some point here in the near future, but we'll find out the answer for you to that and have that when we come back the next time to ask for approval for the plan.
I think initially, it'll be ADA combined.
Rob?
I was just wondering, because I noticed as I walk by, walk on the other side of town, that there's infrastructure work being done by this city, which, around Longfellow, which we're clearly going to be assessed for, so I'm wondering how, to what extent you're able to put something like that into a ten-year plan, and whether that's something that's allowable, when you get assessed by the city to improve the roads around your schools or whatever.
My take is that I don't believe that we can use these dollars for paying assessments, because it's not something that we own. You know, we don't own that space, though I want to really be clear that the city has been actually really good to work with near Longfellow. If you've not, if you've noticed, we actually now have a second cut-in to that driveway at Longfellow, which we were frankly really surprised to get, but it does go to show that the city has worked with us pretty well. And now, I will point out that we are using some funds, and I'd have to go back and look exactly which pot of money is coming out of. There's the walking path that's behind Sibley that goes down through the Sibley Park. We own some, we actually own some of that trail, and the city owns some of it. Well, that, the trail is, the city is getting back on maintaining their trails, and before Paul Bell left, there was some extensive work to make sure that both owners of that collaborated. Now, we'll find out whether that, I would maintain in the rules that I've read, we could have used that money in the future for that kind of activity. So that is an example of how we've collaborated with city government when they're doing something. It's much cheaper for us to do it together than to have them do their part and us do our part. So, but the difference is, we own that part of the trail, and we don't own the city street, unfortunately. I wish that we did. Except for Snow Room, we don't want to want.
Jeff?
I'm just wondering, on a ten-year plan, obviously, then 10 years, I mean, some buildings are just going to be tore down, so you obviously have to be very prudent in your thoughts to think that, you know, you don't want to be putting money into something that you're probably not going to have, but that's still a decision to make, so where does that kind of play in as far as where you're, I mean, you want things functional, but you don't want to, you know, put a lot of money into something that's going to be a teardown either?
You know, I think that since we've been discussing the facilities, and we are going to be announcing tomorrow the series of meetings this, late this month and fall, about that next phase of the facilities discussion, still quite a ways away, but we have held on some projects until that discussion is more complete. But with a ten-year plan, and we, that ten-year plan is an updated and living document every year, so if we have something out in year seven, eight, or nine, the fact is that if we did make a decision to do something different with some of our facilities between now and then, you know, that ten-year plan can be reconfigured to address the current reality at that time. You can make, we could have something on for next year that we choose not to do, and we choose to bump it down, because we can always make modifications to that plan on an annual basis. Does that help?
Sure.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the next item for discussion, which is the current state, or the current update on the Charter School Authorization Renewal.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board, I really want to try to do a couple things tonight, and one of them is this update in terms of the authorizer process, and the second piece I want to do is to give you kind of an update on where we are with our Special Ed Cooperative and where that process appears to be headed. Both of these projects have taken up a significant amount of our time this summer in terms of trying to move them along. One of them, we really were very much instrumental in implementing. The other one is totally being implemented for us and to us, and that's the Authorizer Renewal Process. What we're really looking at here is the idea that the state of Minnesota, if you think back in time, when I first came here 10 years ago, we were sponsoring three charter schools. We sponsored Village, we sponsored Prairie Creek, we sponsored Hart Tech at that time. And the sponsor role was a very loose role. It was kind of like, well, whatever kind of support you can provide, that's okay, but really, in terms of accountability for doing the right thing, accountability for finances, accountability for assessment and curriculum and so on, that was really the venue the state provided. Over the last decade, I think, as most of you know, there's been a significant set of reductions to state funding for MDE, and as part of that, one of the areas that's really taken a significant hit has been the charter school portion of the MDE program. And it's, it has been, I think, really accelerated by the fact that there have been multiple charter schools over the last decade that have made some fairly grievous errors. Errors like spending all the money for the year in two months and going bankrupt. Basically, deciding to embezzle money from your charter school, and then the charter school has no money to operate with. Operating in a religious school and calling it a public charter, all of which are not appropriate. So several years ago, about five or six to be exact, this state legislature really came back to the department and said, what are you going to do about this? You're not really making sure that these folks are accountable. And the Department of Education's strategy was, well, we don't have people to do this. So what we're going to do is ask our sponsors to become authorizers with a whole different level of accountability that they must provide, and a whole different level of oversight that they must provide to each of the charter schools that they authorize. And if you remember, at that time, five or six years ago, I think as we talked to the board, the board was very interested in trying to maintain the relationship we had with our charter schools to try to support them, and encouraged me to move forward with going through the process of becoming a charter school authorizer as a school district, which is what we did. And so we did that, again, about five years ago. Well, it's time to become reauthorized, and so that's the process that we're getting into right now. As you can see on our list, we've attended in-person or by conference call, several webinars that the departments put on over the years. We received notification in this last year that MDE had determined it was time for us to receive our renewal evaluation for Cohort Two, because we were actually the second cohort, in the second cohort of districts and single-purpose authorizers and colleges to go through the process of becoming authorizers. At that point, then, we were required to attend multiple meetings by MDE and learn about the renewal process, and to determine the kinds of things that we needed to put together. Had a meeting then that we had, basically, earlier this year, we received a USB encrypted drive in a special envelope with a secret coded set so that we could, we could open the drive. Unfortunately, they only sent us the drive in Windows, on a Windows 8 platform. Well, in most public schools, we're about three or four generations behind, so we're basically running Windows 7 machines. We're not running Windows 8 or running Mac. And so the initial issue was, we couldn't open the darn thing. We were able to work that out. We had one of our, actually, one of our technology folks who happened to have a Windows 8-enabled machine, they were able to download, open it up, so that then we could copy it over to other machinery, but it just kind of demonstrates kind of how this thing has kind of gone forward. We were also told at the meeting we went to that the first cohort of authorizers had just completed all the work for their reauthorization, and that only 50% of the authorizers had actually achieved a satisfactory rating. So one got an exemplary, one got a satisfactory, and two of them failed. They were approaching satisfactory, but they weren't there. We also learned that because we had not had any requests to implement new charter schools within the boundaries of the Northfield Public Schools, that we could never be eligible to earn an exemplary rating, because the only way you could get an exemplary rating would be if you actually opened up new charter schools during the last five-year period. So we already knew that we were, at best, we could do would be commit So we already knew that we were, at best we could do would be commending them. We also then were notified at, almost at the same meeting, I think maybe a little bit later, that Minneapolis Public Schools and several of the colleges that had been authorizers over the last five years had determined they're no longer going to authorize charter schools. And so what we're really down to, if, as we go through this process, is Northfield and I think two other public school authorizers. One is Cambridge Assante, one is Rashford Peterson, both of which I provided application materials and support to so that they could get their authorizer licensure. So as we go through this process, uh, we look at the fact that really what is being created is a system of authorizers that are almost all private nonprofit corporations who are single purpose in nature. Their sole purpose or one of their only purposes is to authorize charter schools. And they make enough money off authorizing a large number of charter schools so that they can exist and pay the salaries of the people that work for them. My personal feeling is that that's very unfortunate because if you really think about charter schools at this point, and again, this has changed over the years. If you think back when charter schools were first implemented in Minnesota, they were supposed to be these laboratories of innovation. They were supposed to be the opportunity for people to try things that were very different. Over the years, the only piece that's left of that is innovation in curriculum and instruction. Everything else, finance, payroll, HR, uh, all the different rules and regulations, uh, hot lunch program, everything else, they have to run just like any other public school. And the minute they don't, they're in trouble. And if you really think about the charters that have lost their way, it hasn't that they've lost their way because of an instruction or in terms of curriculum, they've lost their way because they don't know how to run their day-to-day finances, they don't know how to set a budget, they don't know how to deal with HR issues, they don't know how to deal with the things that public schools have to do every single day as operators. So, you know, we, we still believe that it's appropriate, uh, to try to support our charters and especially the ones that either deliver kids to us at the end of the elementary, when Prairie Creek students determine whether they're going to go on, go on to Arcadia or come to a middle school and high school, or are, are ones where they ta, are they taking kids that have been in our program and, uh, offering another alternative or opportunity to go to Arcadia. So again, we, we're trying to do what we think is best, but what we're really seeing is a real decline in terms of the number and the type of authorizers that are still going to be left. So once we got all the stuff, along with super-secret decoder, uh, ring, uh, we basically attended two MDE conference calls to request more information and clarity. And then we began to work on answering the 20 narratives that were part of the process. So we basically have 20 narrative documents that have to be created to answer specific questions and requests for information. And then the, the idea is that we also need to be able to prove what we've said in the narrative. So there's a request for a significant amount of documentation to go with each of the, of the pieces. Some of those that I think are probably the ones we're struggling with most right now is the ones that have to do with, um, are you qualified to help support a charter school in terms of finance or personnel or, uh, budgeting or whatever? And, you know, if you think about the team that we have, and it's Matt and I, Cheryl, Mary, um, Val, Molly, we literally have, you know, probably 75 to 100 years of combined administrative experience. In fact, I'm thinking now I got at least half of that probably. Um, and, and, and so, you know, we have a real frustration when people are saying to us, do you really have the experience to know how to do this? Do you really understand how to do evaluations? And we're asked basically to produce resumes, proof of professional development and leadership skills, and, um, you know, and doing all the things that we already have to do every five years in terms of not only getting a license but keeping a license to be a school administrator in Minnesota. Beyond that, in terms of the kinds of information, at this point, Matt and I have amassed approximately 800 pages of documentation to expand the responses to the 20 narrative questions. For example, if you think about it, uh, one of the questions is, from the beginning to the end of the process, show all of the, the data that shows that you have observed and evaluated the performance of one of your charter schools through the last five-year period. And so Denise has been working on some three-ring notebooks for me, but, you know, I have a three-ring notebook for each of the buildings that's probably about four inches thick. All of that data is going to the department. Fortunately electronically, we don't have to kill more trees to get it there. But the, the, the issue is that there are a significant amount of information that we're having to put together. And in many cases, um, it, it seems like they are, there's a lack of trust that we have any idea of what we're doing, which is a little bit frustrating. So anyway, that's kind of where we are so far. We're in the draft stage of getting all the materials together. So what's currently being completed, well, basically we're now reviewing all the narratives and all the documents to determine that we've thoroughly answered every question, responded to every request and documentation. We're now preparing to load all the answers and documentation back onto the encrypted drive and then, no, we cannot mail it to them. We cannot, uh, do anything but hand-deliver it to them at the department. And so, uh, we will be doing that over the next few days because it is due at MDE by August the 17th at 4:30. Not 4:31, but 4:30. So, uh, we're, we're going to have all that put together and ready to go. Uh, we also know that MDE is currently surveying both Arcadia and Prairie Creek, the directors and school board chairs about the performance of, of us as an authorizer over the last five years. And, uh, obviously, one of the concerns we had initially was that as Ryan is leaving and head to Shakopee as a coordinator of teaching and learning, that we would be having a director coming in who had never worked with us trying to complete that. Ryan was very gracious in terms of saying, no, I'd be happy to do that. He worked with his board chair, so they got all the surveys done. So that part is, that part I believe is taken care of. Also at this point, MDE has not hired the third-party evaluator that's going to complete the evaluation, the Cohort Two authorizer. So they, they have an RFP out. When we asked them the other day, have you got your evaluator? We can't tell you. And, and again, I understand they're trying to make sure that, that they are totally objective and that there's nobody coming in that might have any kind of, um, sweetheart relationship or whatever with anybody that's coming in to evaluate. But, uh, again, the issue is, we're now coming up on two weeks before the final date that things have to be in, well, less than that week before the final date that everything has to be in, and they really can't tell us who the evaluator is yet. So what will happen now? And that is on the 17th or before, we will deliver the encrypted thumb drive with all of the information to them. Uh, that evaluator then will review and grade each of our 20 narrative responses, either as, um, exemplary, although none of ours can be exemplary, commendable, satisfactory, or, um, approaching satisfactory, or not satisfactory at all. And so that'll be the first thing. They anticipate that that's going to take probably a couple of months to go through the six or seven different authorizers that are for review. Um, the evaluator then will have to identify any areas where additional information is needed, where there might be corrective action that's required. They also will be reviewing the results of the surveys done of all of the, of the charter folks. And, um, then they will be coming to us either on the phone or requesting us to come to them to go through an interview process with the evaluator. And this is similar to what we had when we first signed on. I had to go in and do a two-hour interview with a panel of folks to demonstrate that we knew what we were doing. Um, and so I don't doubt that that may be where this thing plays out again as we go We expect draft performance reports will be drafted by MDE and sent to authorizers for review probably in early November. And then the final performance reports will be issued and published, uh, on each authorizer's performance profile page at MDE's website and also given to Arcadia and Prairie Creek by the 31st of December. Based on what rating we receive at that point, the district either will complete whatever corrective action requirements are identified that we need to do, or will begin to work on the submission of a new commissioner's approved authorizing plan or CAP, C-A-P. And that has to be submitted to MDE prior to the end of June of 2016. Because our authorizer status actually goes away as of December 31st of this year, which is also interesting because we have a charter school of four renewal this year and will need a new contract. And so we're going to try to work all those pieces through. It sounds like they're going to try to work with us to, to make sure that that's possible for that to happen. So I just wanted to share with you, um, this has been an interesting process. And again, one that, that we're willing to do because we know how important it is for our charter schools to know that they've got support locally, but it is a tremendous load. And there is some real frustration, I think. And having talked to the two other districts that are still public school districts doing this, some real concern about how MDE is treating public schools versus private nonprofit companies. Who may not have anyone who's ever worked in a public school, ever. Um, and so one of the other things that we will probably be looking at, um, this month we'll be meeting with legislative, uh, folks at the end of the month to talk to them about the idea of potentially modifying the rules to make it less onerous for public schools who are also charter, uh, authorizers to work. Because I think unfortunately if that doesn't happen, this thing is going to become, um, will have no connection to public schools at all, except the charter themselves. So any questions I can answer for you so far?
What is the process for the, uh, private nonprofit corporations?
Well, they, they have the same, exactly the same thing that they have to do. But I think, to me, there's some logic in asking folks who are not public school, uh, folks who are not licensed administrators, who've not worked in public schools, who've not been administrators in public schools, to tell the, the department, how do you know how to help? How do you know how to, uh, address accountability? How do you support your charter in doing the things that they're doing? So while I think it probably is reasonable for them to ask that of people who are not licensed administrators, I have a real question as to, do you treat schools with licensed administrators on this, on that entire set of questions in the same way you would treat someone that, that you don't know what their background is? And if you think about it, the other authorizers up to this point have been, you know, public schools, including originally Minneapolis and St. Paul, who've now both pulled out. A few outstate charters like, or charter authors, authorizers like Northfield, Cambridge Assante, and Rashford Peterson, uh, several colleges, including, uh, Augustana and Concordia. And then a, a number of interesting ones like, uh, Friends of Education, F-O-E, or Volunteers of America, or the Audubon Society in the Northwoods, which probably has the largest number of charters in its portfolio, including, uh, the STEM School in Faribault. And then a few others that were actually started out of folks who really were interested in enhancing the charter school movement. Uh, Bob Wadel was part of one of those that used to be the Commissioner of Education. Uh, there's one called Novations, there's one called, what's it, ITP? I think it is, and I, forgive me, I don't know what the initials are. But those groups have all kind of grown up as the need was, was there for authorizers and there weren't enough public schools to do the job. And I think most charter, most public schools looked at this and said, this is a huge amount of work. And to give you some sense of, of what we get back from this, um, the, the authorizer fee for both of, of the, uh, schools that we authorized together is about $26,000. I think if Matt and I do the math just for the last couple of weeks, for the number of hours we've spent, we probably have racked up at, at least a third of that just in trying to put the evaluation together. The other thing you need to know is that this year, not only do we do this, but we still have to do an annual, an authorizer annual report. We have to do evaluations of both of the charters and we have to do a renewal of Prairie Creek. So this is just the start of the work that we have to do for this year. So just want you to be aware of kind of where this is and the fact that I am going to participate with a couple of other administrators in talking to legislators about, is there a need for different, a different approach to take with folks who are practicing licensed school administrators as opposed to people who, we have really no idea what experience or background they have in, uh, working with public education?
Jeff?
Give any knowledge of other states and what they do that could more streamline a process like that?
Well, I, you know, I think other states are, all are going through about the same piece. I think they initially started out with, with, uh, most of the charters being, uh, sponsored by public schools. And I think as accountability has, has increased and as concerns for how various charters are operating has increased, I think what you've seen is, is public schools by and large say, we just can't do this. And, and as a result, it's kind of, how do you fill the vacuum? And the vacuum, I think, becomes other charter authorizers who are non, or they're nonprofit corporations that basically do this for money. You know, where should I do that for the money?
Doesn't MDE provide your Minnesota administrative licensure?
Yes.
So they're asking you to prove to them why they gave you a license?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure I got that through.
And, and, and it's not, you're right. And it's not only, they gave me the license, but they renewed my license.
Right.
Three times since I've been here.
They can't walk down the hall and say, oh, I'm fine.
And, um, they have required 125 clock hours of training every five years that I have to provide to the department, um, through, uh, our folks who look at the, the, um, courses and say, yes, these are appropriate courses for an administrator to take to keep up on what's going on. Plus, as a practicing administrator, you know, I'm at every meeting of Minnesota Association of School Administrators. I've been involved in task forces with the department probably every year since I came to Minnesota. You know, I've worked on everything from curriculum, instruction, to assessment, to finance, to whatever. It, we, we're just, we're just struggling. And, and my sense is, even if I wasn't here, if you look at Cheryl and Matt, Mary, and Val and other folks that are here, they all have significant amounts of administrative experience, far more than any person that's coming from the outside who knows nothing about running a public school or a public school district. So, yeah, they, if you sense a little frustration, I was trying to be able to, just a, a little bit, you know, I don't want to be snarky, but it just, it is a little frustration.
I'll do it for you.
Okay.
I'll be snarky.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad somebody can be snarky.
What that sounds to me like is the department, as an example, the Department of Motor Vehicle, mainly giving you your driver's license one week.
mainly giving you your driver's license one week, then the next week they call you up and say, prove to me you have a driver's license.
Well, prove to me you can drive.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the difference is, I don't, I don't need much training to be able to get a driver's license. I gotta read the book. And I gotta not hit anything while I'm taking the driver's test or do anything really bad. As a school administrator, you know, you make literally thousands of decisions every year, and you better not make very many bad ones. Anywho, so that's kind of the process we're in. We will keep you posted as, as things come back. Again, with the idea that, you know, I think as Matt and I looked at this, we said, we're gonna target just being satisfactory. You know, I mean, we know we can't be exemplary, some of the stuff they're looking at that's commendable, frankly, we don't care that much about it. We wanna make sure we can demonstrate that we would do a good, solid job. And I think if you would talk to Simon, or Ryan, or either of the board chairs or board members, or staff at the two buildings, they'd say, we've done a good job in terms of supporting them, but also making sure that they did the things they needed to do correctly. And I've got, we have two charters that are in excellent financial condition, have really worked to build out. And in the case of one was in a really, not a good financial situation a decade ago, who's really, you know, brought it around. And both of them have really worked hard to address assessment issues and address accountability issues. And I think are very willing to work with, whether it's Mary, or Hope Langston, or any of our folks in terms of learning what they need to learn to do a better job. Anyway, that's where we are right now. Stay tuned.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
So is this authorization, then, would that be for five years?
It is for five years. And let's see, that makes me seventy... I think we're good, for me. Okay.
Well, I appreciate you coming forward and really articulating this.
I just wanted you to be aware of what's there.
It's important that I think we do get a sense for, you know, the magnitude of this as an authorizer. And, you know, we do support the fact that our charter schools give our students and our families a great deal of choice in the community. But, you know, this, this really goes above and beyond what, you know, seems reasonable to any, you know, rational person. So it's really good to hear that there's possibly some legislators who might be interested in seeing, you know, that this has become really unrealty. And if we, we know how, how good you are at working with legislators and helping them to understand the big picture. So hopefully we'll see some, some action.
We will do our best.
But thank you very much, because we know it's coming at a great personal cost to you and Matt to get this completed.
We're having fun.
Yes. Yes, that's what we say to each other each time we sit down at the computer and try to insert data.
So if we're having fun, then we should segue on to SEMSEC.
Well, let's, let's talk to the other piece then. So what I'd like to do tonight also, because you know this is a project we've been working on over the course of the summers, to give you an update in terms of the SEMSEC process and looking at Southeast Minnesota Special Education Cooperative. As you remember, we came to you last spring looking at trying to address and come up with a strategy that would help us to create the greatest access that we could for high-quality special education programming for our setting four students who we knew that individually as districts, we did not have the resources to support on our own. And as a result of the initial discussions, we basically had five, we had meetings with the five school districts. We discussed possibilities, we looked at what made the most sense, we talked about the idea of a special education cooperative. And at the time, after putting together all the materials and presentations and documents that we shared with each district's administration and Board of Education, basically, we asked them, are you ready to do something? And they said, yes, provide us resolutions and an agreement, and we will go back to our boards and talk to them about that. Well, in the process, we ended up with all five districts coming to their boards, asking them to do a resolution to implement SEMSEC and to approve the agreement that was proposed for that. And all of that was done before school was out. Those resolutions and agreements, along with a letter from myself, again, were hand-delivered to the commissioner last month. And basically, we have received approval by the commissioner and a new co-op district member has been signed. So all of the required mechanisms to implement a special education cooperative are in place. We also were very fortunate in terms of the fact that Owatonna really took a leadership role because of their central location of looking at identifying potential facilities that were of sufficient size to meet our immediate needs and also provide ongoing access for all five districts for the programs, even as we expected them to continue to grow. Every one that we've talked to, in terms of experts, have indicated that the programs that we're talking about, SUN-type programs, EBD programs, programs to support students with mental health issues, programs to support students who are transitioning from high school to adult life, that these programs are gonna continue to grow and continue to have needs. And especially the SUN program is going to be in the forefront in terms of that, with students who have complex special education needs and really need a very specialized setting in order to be successful. Owatonna looked and identified different facilities, finally came back and said, we think we have the right facility. They found a forty-two thousand square foot site. Because it was, it was wide open on the inside, it had the ability to have a custom build-out so that it could be built out, to put rooms in place, to put common areas in place, to put additional doors in, to put all the different things in that needed to be in place to really support the program well. And because of the location, which was only a couple of blocks off the interstate, we thought it was the ideal situation to be able to get kids to and from the facility. Because obviously, if you're in Albert Lee, or if you're in Northfield, there's some miles to travel between our districts and the location of the site. I think we all, at that point, were saying, looks good. We basically then went forward with the idea, we now have to begin to start closing some deals. You know, we have identified the program, we've all signed on with a resolution and agreement. Now we have to really put our name on the dotted line to start the process of moving forward with the building. And so we had a letter of intent drafted by the council, we discussed it with the landlord. Letter basically detailed our intention to move forward with a six-year lease agreement at approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, so about one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per district per year, which would include the building lease and approximately two to two-point-three million dollars in build-out costs that would be spread out over the six years. Now to put that in perspective, we currently spend about a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars a year for our portion of the crack building in Faribault, which includes lease on the building, and also includes build-out on the building, because there was significant build-out. That used to be a lumberyard. And so there was major build-out to do that. And in some cases, because it was something new for us to do, there were some parts of it that we, we didn't really have the expertise to know some of the ways that the walls had to be configured and the kind of strengthening or reinforcement that needed to be occurred. So we've had some issues with damage in the building that has to be repaired. So we knew the kinds of things that we needed, and we were, I think, very clear with landlord that he would have to create what we would call hardened buildings. So in other words, putting three-quarter inch plywood behind the sheet rock on steel stud so that basically if a student decides to punch a hole in a wall, they'll make a dent, but they won't break through the wall. And so that makes it a lot easier to repair and maintain. So at that point then, you know, we, we came back to our five districts and said, are we ready to move forward with this? We basically said that if we were, if we were gonna move forward, we needed to have some time to negotiate the final lease agreement with the landlord. Traditionally, in a situation like that, you typically create a, basically a letter of expectation or a letter of intent. And with that, you provide some earnest money so that you're, you're able to move the process forward. And so we looked at the idea of, you know, providing forty thousand dollars per district in earnest money, so a two-hundred thousand dollars on two million or a little less than a ten percent down to say, we're, we are really committed to making this thing happen. And then with the idea that we would work over the course of the next month or so to finalize the details of the lease, get everything ready to go. At that point, we had, one of our districts started to have concerns. They, they, first of all, I think, were concerned about the build-out cost of the building because obviously, a two-point-three million dollar build-out is quite a bit of money. And that's in really best-case scenario. They had seen the potential that it could cost significantly more than that. However, both the landlord and the contractor that he would use were assuring us they could do this for the amount of money that we had proposed. And so there began to be some concerns there. We said, you know, we need to make some decisions here because we know that if we don't begin moving on this process, we need a significant chunk of time to get the build-out done. We need to have this building ready to go by next August so that we can get staff and other folks in there before kids come in as the start of the school year. And we really would like to begin to transition kids back in. So we're really pushing to get that process going. At that point then, we started to hear from one of the districts that, well, they really weren't sure that they wanted to do the whole program. That they were thinking that, wow, we looked at this as a high-quality space to provide for the needs of setting four students, either with kids with unique needs or kids with emotional behavioral disabilities. One of the districts said, well, no, we think maybe we can do the EBD program on our own. We're not sure. We have some kids, we're not sure if that's the case, but we think maybe we could do that on our own. So what we really would like to do is not to be involved with the rest of the program. We'd like to just do the SUN program, which none of us can do on our own. But we really think we could do the EBD program on our own. At that point then, a second district said, well, if you're gonna do an EBD program, we'll just come to you, not go to the SEMSEC cooperative. So we've had a couple of meetings since then to say, wait a minute, this is not where we started. This is not really where we, where we think we need to be. I think they've approached it with the idea, and I guess I describe in here, it's kind of the, the concept that they think that a co-op is like an avant-garde menu, where I think the rest of us felt that a co-op is like a buffet. A buffet, everybody pays the same amount. You can get whatever you need. If you like to eat just all one thing, great. If you wanna eat some of each, that's great too. If you like dessert, that's wonderful. If you like more meat and potatoes, that's great. The problem with doing an avant-garde process is that the two districts involved then said to us, well, we don't wanna pay for the build-out of the part of the program that we don't think we need. We don't think we need to pay for the build-out of the EBD part of the program. Nor do we think we should pay the same lease payment because we won't be using all of the building, while you will be. So we, we have basically talked around and through this multiple times. I've had several meetings with the other superintendents. And at this point, as late as last week, the conversation was, well, we still are thinking about this, we will get back to you this week. Well, we haven't heard from anybody in terms of that. I know where the, where the other two districts are. They are locked with us, they're ready to go forward, they're ready to basically fund the cost of the entire build-out, get all the programming, know that they'll have access to whatever programs they need whenever they need them, and they know that they will get a higher-quality program because with a larger pool of students, our ability to provide high-quality teachers and do the things we need to do will be the most effective. But what we're seeing right now is that, is that this may all come apart. And, you know, I think we're very frustrated, very concerned. We've asked those districts to reconsider, we're currently waiting for a response. But that's basically where we are right now. So we're all prepared to move forward, but we're locked up right now because we don't have everybody willing to move forward in terms of the lease agreement. And there's, there's basically a discussion or disagreement about, should we all pay the same amount for the lease and build out the entire building? Or should some of us pay to build out the entire building and pay a larger chunk in the lease and others only pay for the part of the building that they wanna use at this moment? And obviously, we've said to them, tomorrow, you could have a student moves, that moves in that needs that program. Now what are you gonna do? Well, then we'll think about paying for the rest of the, of the process. So I think you can tell I'm a little frustrated about this. You know, I mean, we put a lot of effort into this. I think we had a lot of, of good thinking, we brought all of our special ed directors in the process, all of the business managers into the process. I think everybody was coalescing around what we thought was the best way to go. And now it seems like it's basically coming undone. So right now, this is kind of where we are. You know, we're, we're basically waiting. We can't wait a whole lot longer because I think the landlord is basically saying, I need to know, are you ready to move forward? Because we know it's gonna take a while to get the work done. What I would like to ask you to consider tonight is the, the concept that you give us administrative authority, and that would require adding an item to the, to the action items for tonight. Give us administrative authority that if, in fact, we can put this back together, and if, in fact, everybody else is willing to put their money in to move the process forward, that we have authority to put down our earnest money to get the same thing to happen, which is a forty thousand dollar amount. I have no intention of putting any money in till I see all four of the other districts cash. I just, at this point, I have lost trust that I'm gonna get, get where I need to be with this. But there, you know, hope springs eternal, that, you know, there may be some thought about this that says, you know, maybe this, this, we went the wrong direction, we didn't think through this. I spent a lot of time with one of the superintendents last week trying to help him to understand the concept of access and the concept of trying to have that long-term availability of the programming we need. I think they can understand that, but they're just having a really hard time getting past the initial cost and the fact that it isn't all, that they can't just have what they want and not what everyone needs. And again, my whole concept around the co-op is, in a co-op, everybody makes some sacrifices for the good of the, of the group. And in the end, you end up all with a higher-quality program than you would have otherwise. But not everybody, I guess, at this point, is on that piece. So what happens if we go forward and the co-op doesn't make it? Well, at that point then, we'll need to dissolve the co-op, and I'm gonna have to contact the department and say, what does that take to do? Because now we are an official co-op and we have a number, and all that other good stuff. At that point, we've already met twice now with Faribault. And while we can no longer do a joint powers agreement, the thing that we think may be the next best approach to take would to, would be to each of us take on certain programs and run them. And that we basically share students between the two programs, which means each program would allow access of the other school district with the students that they have, and would make sure that we meet the needs of all the kids that we have in the program. So it would be- So, it would be the idea that, going forward for the sixteen-seventeen year, that Faribault would continue with its Crec Center. They would run the EBD Setting-For program. They'd run the program for meeting students who, who are in the step program or moving through with transitions. And I think they would also support students with mental health issues and day treatment issues. And then, Northfield would take on the SUN program, the Students with Unique Needs program. As part of that, that means that Faribault then is on its own, finishing out, paying the lease and the build-out for its own building. So, its actual cost of leasing will go up by probably about forty to fifty thousand dollars a year until they finish getting the building built out. But we can no longer participate in that co-op arrangement or that joint powers arrangement. What we will be responsible on our own to do is to find a building to lease, get a building to build out. We anticipate that's going to cost us, again, in the hundred-and-fifty to hundred-and-sixty thousand dollar per year lease range. So, we'll actually be kind of awash from where we are this year. We'll be paying about as much as we were paying jointly with Faribault in previous years, but we would run the program here, and it would be our program with Faribault having kind of the first right to put kids into the program, just as we would have the first right to add kids into the EBD program, Setting-For, and the other programs in Faribault. We know that we can work together. We've done it, you know, for a number of years. What this does do is it relieves the pressure on Crec, which really has become overcrowded in terms of the number of students that are there, and really, the need to separate especially the EBD program from the SUN program, because those have tremendous amounts of need in both cases. So, when we look at it, there's kind of some, there are both advantages and disadvantages to the process. The advantages are that we can, we can hopefully meet the needs of all of our kids by working this way. We basically are splitting the hosting duties, so the programs that are hosted in Faribault, Faribault will run. It will be on Faribault's teaching contract. It will be using Faribault administration to run it. They will cover all the costs, and then, they will bill us for those costs for the program. We will do the same thing for the SUN students here and provide all of the, the requirements that need to be in place. For Faribault, it will mean a little more transportation cost than they've had before, because now, they will need to transport their SUN kids to Northfield. We've already been transporting our SUN kids and our EBD kids to Faribault over the last decade, so there'll be some wash. There will, we will actually have a slight reduction in our costs, because we'll only be busing a portion of our kids down as compared to what we've had before. By doing that, we would be able, we hope by, before the end of September, when we have to, to have a determination of what the, the costing will be, so that we can include it in the, our tax certification at the end of September, to basically make sure that we, we have the money to levy for the building lease and the build-out that would start on July one of two thousand and sixteen. We're looking for a building probably in the neighborhood of six thousand square feet. And I've already talked to a real estate agent in the community to begin looking for options and possibilities. And again, tried to share with them, we have some, we will have some kind of unique needs in terms of the ability, that this probably is not going to work well if it's next to a lawyer's office or next to a doctor's office or whatever, that there may need to be a space. And besides that, we really don't want offices that are really, are offices that's already built out, because we're all, we really need to build it out kind of from scratch. We're looking more probably for a space that's more either warehouse or storage or other kind of space, as long as it has appropriate plumbing and so on that we can build out on. And we have to find the landlord that's willing to do the build-out and spread the payment back of the build-out for several years in the process. We think it probably makes the most sense to do that. At this point, then, we really have two alternatives going forward. One alternative is that SEMSEC resurrects itself, because all five districts come to the point of saying, "Yeah, we better do this. This was not a wise idea to try to not go forward." But we need to be prepared for Plan B. And so, we wanted you to know kind of what Plan B is and the approach we'd be taking, and the fact that we're going to need to move pretty quickly one way or the other. And so, again, what I'd ask you tonight to consider would be, again, giving us administrative authority that if we are able to get all five districts together and move forward, and I see the earnest money from all four of the other players, that we would be in a position, if, if this happens before our next board meeting, to be able to go ahead and put that earnest money in along with our intent letter. The flip side is, if that doesn't happen, I, I need your permission simply to move forward with the process of reaching out to develop a lease agreement and a build-out agreement to put the SUN program here in Northfield beginning in two thousand and sixteen-seventeen.
We'll start with some questions, and then, we'll move to, to a motion. Should we do a motion?
We, I think we'll actually have to have somebody introduce a motion when we get to the, to the superintendent's items for, for action. Because this, we're still in discussion.
We're still in discussion at this point. I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying that. So...
I have a question.
Ellen?
So, I have a question about, it sounded like, because eventually, if we, if the board as a, as a whole thinks that we should go in this direction, that you need a, a motion on the table. And I'm, I'm questioning, so it sounds like what you need is authority from the board for approval of non-refundable earnest money to move forward.
That's correct.
And the other piece, but you said board to move forward, so is it...
Yeah. Well, and, and I don't think there's necessarily a motion required in the second piece.
Okay, that's what I'm...
So, so in other words, because of, of how that would move forward, it's going to take some time. Obviously, the person I've got that's a real estate agent is saying, "I'm, I have some properties in mind. Let me get some schematics for you and, and do some initial discussions with some of the landlords involved to find out what's there." So, that probably definitely, you know, I definitely wouldn't, I wouldn't need any authorization from you prior to the next board meeting, if even that quickly. However, the other piece really is linked to kind of the end of the month, and since our board meeting is so late, I didn't want to end up with, we're somewhere between the fifteenth and the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four is the next one.
And, you know, and I need to be able to get a check written for forty thousand dollars of earnest money and an intent letter. I need your authorization to move forward to do that, if everybody else is on board. Our belief is, we cannot run this with three districts. We can't run this with two districts. It just doesn't, isn't going to work. The only other piece that will work, we think, is the Plan B, because Faribault and Northfield have already worked together for over a decade. We kind of know how the, how the game is played and what pieces we have to do, and because Cheryl has had some experience with, been in both districts to kind of know how they, those pieces are, I, we think we can pull that off and, and provide a program. I want to say to you upfront, I make no bones about the fact that Plan B is not as strong as the five-district cooperative arrangement. The five-district arrangement means you have the equivalent of a district the size of Oseo, you know, twenty, twenty-two thousand kids total, to create a pool of special ed kids. So, your chances of, of having the right numbers to fill classes, to be able to hire the best folks, to be able to hire a good administrator, to be able to hire the specialist you need to get the job done, cannot be as good in the, in a setting where we only have two districts involved. We also know that if we were going into a co-op, if you remember, part of the discussion was, you would start fresh with negotiations, because there would be no unions. You would basically start out with, with a, basically, just an agreement that would begin the process. So, you could work with the money. You could make sure that you paid people what they need to be paid, knowing that this is a tough job and a job that burns people out. And you have none of the stuff in the agreement like you have in, in at least one of our current agreements, not, doesn't happen to be Northfield's, which allows teachers to bid out of a position that they don't want to stay in. So, what, what, one of the downsides, obviously, for Faribault is because its contract basically has that piece in it. If people become discouraged in working in that environment, as soon as they get some tenure, they will jump into the first open special ed position that's not there. Am I saying it right, saying that, I'm trying to be really soft with this, okay? But the flip side is, in Northfield, we don't have that. In Northfield, basically, we have right of assignment. And so, over the years, we've always been able to say, "No, this is where we think is the best place for you to be." So, is Plan B as good as the five-district co-op? No, I don't think it is. But I think, given the other alternatives, which are sending all of our kids to someplace else to try to meet their needs, trying at this point to figure out if we could make any sense of moving into the Southwest Metro new intermediate district, we think this is probably the best strategy and one that we think we can do with the least amount of disruption and, and still be able to provide the program. And basically, have all of our students coming with a maximum travel ti, travel distance of ten miles. So, there's, there's some offsetting pieces, because if you think about it, when we were talking about having kids go to Owatonna, kids from the far northwest corner of our district to get to Owatonna, that is a pretty good stretch. So, there are some, there are some benefits in terms of transportation of keeping it down to the two districts. At the same time, with only about eight thousand kids to draw the pool of special ed kids, we're going to have less flexibility, because we don't have enough kids to always make everything work perfectly. I'm being pretty honest with you at this point. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No.
Are, are there two schools in the close vicinity that would be interested in buying in to fill out the five schools for the co-op? Is that a possibility?
Not that I'm aware of, because if you go north, all of them belong to, to nine-seventeen. If you go west, all of them belong to the new Southwest Intermediate District, so including Tri-City and New Prague. To the east, Cannon Falls, and those folks all belong to Zembro Ed District, right?
Goodview County.
Right, yeah. Goodview County Ed District. And to the south, basically, other than us, everybody...
Zembro Ed District.
Yeah, goes to Zembro. So, the, the, the thing is, and if you remember, that was part of the discussion initially, was almost everybody else is already in a co-op or in Ed District. So, the, the, the problem is, there are just not a lot of us out there that are by ourselves.
Margaret? Are the two districts that are, that are waffling right now, are they of similar size to us? And if so, well, how, I don't understand how they don't have a same proportion of students in their district that have these needs that we, Faribault and Owatonna do.
Well, I think they have, the, the, I think the one has absolutely the same number of SUN students, and I know is going to be educating their SUN students, I think, in a basement classroom this year, because it's really the only place they have to operate. And again, they don't have enough kids to make it be economical, but the other district is actually schooling kids at home and having a, having student, having teachers go out to the home to provide educational services. So, they can't go without Ed services. They've got to get the services, but the, none of, none of the five districts have enough kids in SUN to make it happen. I think the one district believes it has enough EBD kids that it can run its own program and do it appropriately.
Currently is.
Currently. And so, in the end, that's going to be the tough part, is that if we end up going with Faribault, then the other three districts really don't have a SUN option, unless they try to create a SUN option of their own to the south. And right now, if I feel, you know, I mean, the, the district I'm most concerned about is kind of the district in the middle, who spent all the effort trying to help us find a space and whatever, and has been unable to, you know, move their colleagues to move This is tough, you know, I mean, because, again, I really felt that people were there and were ready to go. And then, it seems like it's just, it, it's come apart based on some concerns expressed by a couple of the folks, and in some cases, not even the superintendent.
Ellen?
So, I guess I'd like to move that we add an item for individual action onto the agenda to have a superintendent, find out what superintendent's recommendation is.
I would actually give you one at that point, yes.
Okay. Going forward. So, my, my motion is that we add an item to the, items for...
Do you have to make a motion to do, add a motion?
I have to make a motion to add an item to the agenda. So, I'm adding an item to the agenda.
She wants to add an item to the...
Because there's currently no items for individual action.
So, she wants to add an item to the agenda, and that item would be to authorize...
Well, are we talking about two different motions? The first one is to add the...
I, I...
Because we have to, yeah.
Two motions, so...
Okay, you, you want to separate it, that's fine.
They need to be separate. Well, they need to be separate.
That's fine.
So, I'm add, I'm moving that we add an item for, to the agenda for individual action to, to address whether, the authority of moving forward with SEMSEC prior to the next board meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Second by Margaret? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
Repeat the motion.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Sure. An emotion by Ellen, second by Margaret, to, the board is asked to add an item for individual action to address the SEMSEC situation.
This, authorizing SEMSEC prior to the next board meeting.
Oh, so then, you are wanting to authorize the forty thousand dollars?
No, not yet, no.
That is my question. It needs to be two separated.
So, what is this one, then?
So, this is just a, just to add an item for action.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so to add an item for individual action.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Are there about the specific motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, with that, are there any other questions?
That's part of the discussion of the SEMSEC district.
No.
I have one other question, that if after the five schools buy into the project, are they able to get out within their five years, or was they, and get the unused money back? Or are they locked in for the program?
I would say if they're in, in, signed into the lease, since they're already signed into the program, then they are locked in for that period of time.
Yeah, I, I'm getting nervous if they're waffling now.
Yeah. I, and I, I have all the same concerns, and all that you have on this.
That's an excellent question, though.
Along with the forty thousand, I mean, contingent upon the other four schools.
Contingent upon the other four schools, putting their money up, yeah.
Okay. Jack, do you have another question?
Well, you, you do that when you get to the, when you actually get to making the motion in, in the next phase of the board meeting.
Correct. Okay, so one more question. Would it be cost-effective to go for it and build out half the building? In the hopes that they will...
Couple things. Number one, I think to only run the SUN program and not the other is going to end up having administrators and staff that, that aren't used enough to make, make it cost-effective. Number two, my belief is that the landlord involved wants nothing to do with building out half the building and leaving the other half empty.
Good questions. Does everyone feel comfortable with questions that have been asked, and if there's any All right, so then, what we'll do next, as part of the normal flow of the agenda, is move on to items for individual action. is move on to items for individual action. Prior to this past motion, we didn't have any items. So we now have one item for individual action. And we would look for a motion to address, Ellen?
I, I move that we authorize the approval of a non-refundable earnest money in the amount of forty thousand dollars to secure the letter of intent for the SEMSEC district site.
Okay.
Do we have to have a if?
Contingent.
Continue. Okay, either that or we can add it as an amendment to the motion unless you want to put it out of the motion.
If you can be friendly, you can do it now.
Yeah, we can do a friendly amendment. So.
Yeah.
Contingent upon the other four school districts.
Other four districts.
Okay.
Cooperating.
Cooperating.
Moving forward as well.
Okay, so if we could take a moment, Danina, could you repeat the motion?
I think she's got it written out.
So let's, let's repeat the motion.
So to authorize the approval of a non-refundable earnest money in the amount of forty thousand dollars to secure the letter of intent for the SEMSEC district site on the contingent that the other four districts are also moving forward.
Remember to continue.
Yeah, so it'd be contingent to that happening, right.
Do you want us to pass that down?
It has to be moved and seconded and then discussion on that.
Yeah, so, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Jeff, second? So is there any discussion on the motion?
I have a point of clarification. I, I need someone to explain to me the unrefundable forty thousand contingent upon something.
Well, it, it, the contingency is I'm not, not going to ask anybody from our district to write a check to the landlord until I know that the checks for the other four districts are in their hand.
Then it's non-refundable.
Then it's not, that, that point is non-refundable.
Right.
But until that point, I'm not going to write the check because at this point, I don't know that the others are going to do the same. And I want to make sure they will before we go forward.
I trust your judgment. Thank you.
Okay, so are there any other questions on the motion? Okay, I'm ready to vote. So motion is on the table. There's a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we will move on to, well, I appreciate, Jeff, which has been the time that you have put into this. And we, we hope that as the week plays out, that, that the developments will be the way. We will be anxiously awaiting any update.
Any word.
Any word on how that moves forward. But I think we appreciate seeing that there's been so much thought and consideration to the Plan B, which, you know, we know will serve students and will continue to serve students to the best of our abilities as, as we always have. So we will hope that either of the, the plans will, will come to fruition and we will again look forward to updates. Alright, so we will move on now to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there was a number of personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull on that consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen, second by Noel. Is there any discussion or questions?
One question, CNA one, is that a nursing assistant?
Child nutrition.
Nutrition, thank you. In my world, that means nursing assistant. I want to clarify.
Good point of clarification. Thank you. Any other question? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So items for information, in our packets, there was policy four twenty-eight, which is the first reading of the district's sick leave allowance bank.
Yes, if I can just briefly review it.
Yes, that will.
Basically, all our fifteen different employee groups, we have four groups that have sick leave banks. And what a sick leave bank is really an insurance policy against a serious illness or a need for bere, additional bereavement leave should an employee exhaust all of their sick leave and their vacation and or personal leave. And as we've worked with the Northfield Education Association on a number of issues, they came forward and volunteered basically to take their language that they have in their agreement and bring it forth as a district policy. Because there's times where we need to work together, work with individual bargaining units. And there's times where we need to work as an entire district family. And when we have employees who are facing a, really a catastrophic medical situation or are in a situation where there's been a tremendous amount of sick leave used already and now we've moved to where there's a need for bereavement leave, what the sick leave bank would establish is that every employee within the district who meets the basic criteria of working twenty hours or more a week and, and volunteers to join the bank would have access to an additional, basically twenty days of sick leave for things that would qualify for themselves or for their dependent child or for bereavement leave up to ten days with, as identified in their agreement. This is just the first reading of a policy, so we're just asking that you consider this. As we've been forward, we've worked with four different bargaining groups that already have sick leave language in their contracts. We have tacit agreement from all of them to move forward, should the board put this into policy. But again, we look at this as that there's times when each individual contract should have its nuances and there's times where a policy or approach should be good for all employees regardless of the bargaining unit that you're in. So again, you'd have to qualify, you'd have to join, you'd have to exhaust all of your accumulated sick leave. If you, if you're in an employment group that has vacation, you'd have to exhaust that or your personal leave before you could access this particular bank. The language that we're using in front of you is from the Teachers Association's current contract. It's been around for quite a long time. And one piece that, just to point out, is that very rarely do we have a policy that says that we would need to get the consent of one of our bargaining groups to change it. But this is one. There are a couple. This would be one of them because the teachers would be giving this up from their agreement. And so it, it does seem fair that they would have some say if we were to try to make a change in this policy as time goes on. So if there are any, if you have any, answering any questions, this is the first reading of the policy, so we'll have another opportunity next month or next time.
I'm sure that HR follows FMLA policy, so they can't leave their job with no repercussions and be gone. But do the, do the employees not have short-term disability to draw from?
They do not.
They don't. Okay, that's why this is necessary.
Correct.
Okay.
They only have long-term disability.
Okay. Is short-term disability just cost prohibitive, given our budget?
You know, I think that, I, I don't know why we haven't pursued that, but we can find that out for you. I, I believe that there's a cost piece. I also think there's probably some eligibility components around it since we have, most of our employees are not year-round. But we can investigate that. It's just a piece we've not ever had. Because the, that's the way we've always done it, is the answer that we need to give. Well, it's not necessarily always the right answer.
And I'm not aware, Margaret, in any, in any district or any state that I've worked in, any district that has, has short-term disability.
I think our short term is our sick leave, you know, in terms of that piece. And this is, this is another piece.
Short-term would allow you to be out as long as your doctor said so at sixty percent of your income. So I'm just curious if that was offered here, but apparently.
It hasn't been, but we can certainly ask a few more questions on that for you.
Okay.
Good question.
Because the other thing is that the sick leave tends to be the bridge.
Correct.
In mo, in most cases, the sick leave would be the bridge between, you know, getting, getting to that. Sick leave would get you out to the sixty days that you need to be out.
Yeah, well, and you'd use up your sick leave anyway, but then you move into short dis, the term, which would mean you would not use this, yeah.
Good question.
There's a lot of employees who don't have access to a sick leave bank right now that would have access as a result of this if they were to move forward.
So, okay, so that was the last item for, or only item for information. So just as, um, review, future meetings will be Monday, August twenty-fourth, and then will be into September, Monday, September fourteenth. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn, moved by Noel, second. Second by Ann. All those in favor? Say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.